I wonder if these are working. I think they are.
Did you get the cookie from somewhere?
I did.
Oh, the cookies are here.
Oh, that's it. Is that yours?
Yeah, that's it.
I told Mark. I admire what sent to him.
Actually, Rachel, I envy their skill. He's a statewide anomaly.
You ready? Susan, you ready? Good evening. I'm going to sit down and speak through the mic. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. We have a little bit of a problem with our AV system. Our staff is working through it. I believe the mics on the podium work, but not the other mics. If you are here to speak to the council, I would like to request that you use the mic on the side as that the stadium mic will not work. Before we begin, I want to introduce two groups of people. I should say one individual and a large group. Tonight's invocation will be led by Kelton Wilson. Kelton is a recently elected SIST Board of Trustee, and he has also served in one of our citizens committee. Also, after that, the tonight's Pledge of Allegiance will be led by a wonderful group of kids of Mesquite and Sunnyvale. The team's name is Mesquite Marlins, and I want to welcome each one of you to this event. I was told that Mesquite Marlins is made up of 165 swimmers. Of that 60 are from Sunnyvale, and I believe that Coach Holland is with us also. Welcome. At this time, let me invite Mr. Kelton Wilson to lead the invocation. Please join me in standing for the invocation.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to assemble and to gather here today just to do those things that you've asked of us and do it in an honorable manner. Father, we thank you for living in a country as great as this, and we thank you for the opportunity to serve a community in a small town such as ours. And we all hold dear and dear. May we ever be mindful that all we do is for the greater good, not for selfish ambition. Lord, we ask you, God, our thoughts, our decision-making process, and ultimately let them be done for your glory. In Jesus's name we pray.
Amen. Praise your allegiance.
Just before we get started, I wanted to let you know that this is my sixth year as the head coach of this team. We start our season June 1st, and we end July 29th. As you can see, these are kids all ages from five all the way up to 17. And like you said, Mayor, we have 60 swimmers on the team that are from Sunnyvale. And that number continues to grow and grow. We also have an adult team. And our adult team now has gone up to 20 swimmers. And out of those 20 swimmers, seven of those athletes are from Sunnyvale as well. And those are ages from 20 all the way up to in their 40s. So we have adults. And actually, two of them in their 30s competed Saturday in their first swimming meet as adults. So I just wanted to let you know that we do have, as you can see, a big group of swimmers here in this community that are competitive swimmers that are wanting to do this as a sport at the highest level. And we're just so proud that it's by word of mouth. There's not a lot of advertisement in this. And as we continue to grow and grow, we just look forward to seeing how this town can grow in the sports and succeed and excel at this sport at the highest level. And so with that said, guys, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance facing the flag. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag. Off the United States of America, unto the Republic, for the justice, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in mind. Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, everybody.
With the closer. I think. The TV screen is looking. Okay. Okay, the time is 7:05. Let me call to order the regular Town Council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for July 8th. Today is the first meeting in July. For the record, the time is 7:05. For the record, all council members are present. So we have call up. Okay, first item is the public forum. If there's anyone who'd like to come and speak to the council at this time, please come forward. One request, if you are here to speak to the council on any agenda items or otherwise, let me request that you sign in. There is a signup sheet outside. A signup sheet outside. I request that you sign in in that form, that way staff can keep record of who is here and who is speaking to the council. With that, again, time for public forum. If you would like to come and speak to the council at this time, please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I am going to close the public forum. Council, it's always my great pleasure when we as a body, we invite many of our citizens to come and serve in different capacities. And we have a lot of good, qualified, educated, experienced professionals living in Sunnyvale. So, and many of them sign up. So tonight, it's my privilege to recognize two groups of citizens on your behalf. The first one is recognition of the police focus group committee members. I'm going to speak from here only reason the mics only work, only the podium mics, the DSO mics work, that's why. A few months back, when we knew Sunnyvale has to look for our own police department or options other than Dallas Sheriff Office. Many of us were very sad because we like our DSO. We have a wonderful group of police officers. People love. And every day I get emails. Every time there's a tragedy in town, I get emails saying that what a wonderful job our staff or police officers done. At the same time, we knew that we couldn't keep the service anymore. So we requested a group of citizens to come forward and to work with a consultant to research, analyze the data, look at options. And they did. For many days, they came together after work. We had many people with a lot of police experience, community experience. Very diverse group of citizens from different walks of life, different parts of town, different experiences in life. And at the end, they made a recommendation to council to form Sunnyvale Police Department. And that was a big help for the council. And currently, we are in the process of recruiting a public safety officer. And tonight, there will be the first reading of the ordinance to form Sunnyvale Police Department. So again, this is because of the hard work of this citizens committee. So tonight, I want to recognize all of them. Let me read their names from the stage, that way I can hear your name. Ryan Finch, Councilmember Finch, or Mayor Portman Finch. Mike Jones. Thomas Latham. Kelton Wilson. Randy Ferguson. Roy Gray. Robert White. Stephen Pettit. Debbie Geis. Nick Sloan. And that's it. That was the group of team. So after this, I'll come forward, and if you could come forward and receive the certificate from me, that'll be appreciated. Second is a committee, citizens committee called Capital Improvement Plan Citizens Committee. As you know, Sunnyvale is aging like most of us. Not all. And some of the infrastructure we have in Sunnyvale are quite old. Some are older than Sunnyvale. And over the years, this is a lot of expense. So it's hard to make decisions. So for various reasons, we did not address those issues effectively. Now, we have a large number of capital improvement projects. I think total add up to $107 million, I believe. So our staff came up with an approach, a process for prioritizing and selecting this project. Then we solicited the help of, again, a group of very qualified citizens to come and work with the staff to reevaluate, reassess, and prioritize for the town these projects. And that committee made a recommendation to council on a sequence of projects, a series of projects, and the sequence, what timing. And that's a big help. And part of the way, there are multiple ways to fund this project. Some of them are tax notes. Some of them are COs, Certificate of Obligation. And other is the general election. We go to the vote test for approval. And again, I want to thank each one of this citizens committee members for the town. When I sat through some of these meetings, I could see the stress on the face of some of these committee members just looking at the dollars it takes. And I don't think many of them realize how much work is there. As we move forward in by, in May of 2020, you will hear, if the council approves, there will be an election coming up to approve possibly the police department and new facility, a public safety officer, I should say. And, is that right? I'm sorry, the fire department, I'm wrong. Fire department and the animal control facility. So I would request and expect that this committee members, even though they may not be a formal committee anymore, will continue to stay and fight for these causes. With that, let me announce their names. It is Teresa Bruiser, LeAnn Williams, Cindy Barnowski, Todd Rander, Ryan Finch, Lyndon James, Kevin Clark, Superintendent Doug Williams, Chris Lawless, and Andrew Harper, and Anthony Farmer. So at this time, I am going to invite the police committee to come forward. After that, we will have the citizens, the Capital Improvement Projects Committee members to come forward. Thank you once again, everyone. My laptop died. Just going to charge. It's all good. It's all good. Today's a good day. Okay, the next items is consent, agenda items. Item number one, that is to consider approval of minutes for the regular meeting of the Town Council for June 24, 2019. Council, is there anything you would like to add or delete to this consent agenda items? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 1 as presented?
Make a motion to approve Consent Agenda Item 1 as presented?
Motion made by Mayor Portman Finch to approve Consent Agenda Item 1 as presented. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed 7-0. The next is the public hearing portion of the agenda. Item number two, hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act upon the first reading of Ordinance 19-16 and Ordinance, amending Ordinance 19-10, which made appropriations for the support of the Town of Sunnyvale for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2018 and ending September 30, 2019, and amending the annual budget of the Town of Sunnyvale for the year 2018 to 2019 fiscal year. Ms. Hopkins?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. To fund additional incentives and recognize the expiration of the Road Maintenance Sales Tax Program, staff has reviewed the budget and identified line item changes that will provide necessary funding through increases in certain revenues and decreases in certain expenses. Page nine of your packet, I'm sorry, page 11 of your packet has those items listed. It affects the General Fund and the 4A Economic Development Corporation. And I'll be glad to answer any questions on any of those line item changes.
Because I have one question on it. See, on the expense side, road maintenance, I understand why the $141,000 difference. I get that. Are there any projects we did not do?
We did have one PSA. Brian might be able to speak to this, that we did not get done as part of the five-year plan that we had in place. We're going to try to get that going again, I believe, with Dallas County. I believe the roads affected were Tower Place. I'm afraid I didn't bring that list with me, but there was one portion of that five-year plan that we did not get done. It was TRIP. Right, and so those are the items that we brought forward and requested of the county. We don't know if they're going to enter into that agreement with us or not, but we have set aside that and you'll see it in the upcoming budget sessions, enough money to do those next fiscal year. Brian?
Yes, yes, sir.
Well, on the ballpark, we have support from 4B. They gave us a contingency. So we feel like with that contingency that we could lower the general funds portion of that and still get all the projects done that Burton has identified needed being done.
Counsel, question for Ms. Hopkins?
Liz, is there a reason why the general fund sales tax revenue decrease is not the same amount as the 4A revenue increase?
I believe it has to do with the way that we accrued for that. I'll have to verify that for you. But the $214,000 is actual. That's actual money. There's no accrual in there. The 4A has an accrual portion in there. And that, I believe, is what the difference is.
Thanks.
Counsel, is there a question for?
Ms. Hopkins? Okay, it's a public hearing portion of the agenda. So if anyone would like to come forward and discuss this agenda item, please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I am going to close the public hearing. Counsel, are there additional discussions or questions on Agenda Item 2? Okay, if not, can I have a motion with respect to Agenda Item 2?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve Agenda Item 2 as presented.
Motion made by Mayor Portman Finch to approve Agenda Item 2 as presented.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed 7-0.
Can that be put on Consent Agenda next time? That's just to move it to a second reading.
Now, that's the first reading, correct? Yeah. Yes, come back to the second reading. Let's put in the Consent Agenda. That be okay with you? You need to come back? It's a public hearing. You're right.
You know, we had some objection from the
Fair enough. Let's put out.
Audience about putting those kinds of things on the Consent Agenda.
Yeah, good point. Moving on to Agenda Item 3, that is to hold a public hearing, discuss, consider, and act upon the request by Brian Connolly to approve a replat of Stony Creek 5A, Lot 5R, Block A, I thought about 431 East Strip Road. Rashad Jackson?
Mayor, Council. Applicant is, as you noted, Brian Connolly. And he's working with the Paul Taylor Homes builder. They are coming in to replat because of the previous plat that created this remnant lot to create the Stony Creek 5B Section 2. The remnant lot was created because of Shelby Lane to provide access to that new phase. So in order to provide for a more developable lot, they're combining the two lots, which created a Lot 5R Block A. PNZ reviewed this and didn't note any issues and recommended approval.
Counsel, question for Mr. Jackson?
Rashad, the piece of land that's rectangular but also depicted as being cut off by the red dotted line. There's a tight piece of land that's left. Is that for what?
My understanding that is just HOA, open space area, and it's, I believe, an easement there. The applicant can probably speak to that in more detail than I can.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Welcome. Yes, sir. And also, there's a sign sheet outside, if you don't mind, please.
I signed it.
Excellent, thank you.
My name is Paul Taylor. I'm the applicant. Seventeen-nine-fifty Preston Road. You asked about the remnant, the triangular piece?
Right.
That was retained by the developers of Phase B as a HOA lot, and I don't know why that was retained, but we respect that, and that will remain an HOA lot. We are just combining the remnant lot with the existing one, so that we don't have something we're selling by meets and bounds, now we have one.
So, we're sure we're calling that the same piece?
Yeah.
This, this piece of nothing here?
It's HOA, and it's, that's managed by the South Gate Development.
So, the road, the road is gonna come, Shelby Lane's gonna extend here?
It's already there.
And there's not gonna be a turn here, so that's gonna, it seems awkward to me, if you don't want the property and they wanna do something with it, it just seems like it's kind of awkward.
Well, you know, it already needed it to be HOA, so they, they purchased, purchased this piece from Grand Borridge out of this lot, they just left this rental. I'm just trying to think about it. And my, my, our lot five is, is here, and we're just trying to clean that up, don't know where our lot six is, we're just trying to clean that up. So, this is the road that you said it hit, the city, this is the triangular piece, I don't know why they did that, it's part of the HOA, you know, that's exactly what it is. Our, our lot runs along that, and
Larry, didn't that exist because they did the expansion, or the, made the entrance larger than originally anticipated? Because now they have that split median.
Oh, you're talking about the lot, why the lot is small?
Yeah, that's why it became sort of a remnant lot, that's what you called it. I think it's because they ended up taking more property to, to make that entrance. From the normal two lanes to a divided
It is wider at the front, the
It is.
Dual lane, but this remnant piece, I don't know.
The road looks like it's next to the bit, right? It's wide, the road kinda next to the bit, right?
It is, it's wider.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's awkward. What's that the things you want during ten years from now, what's that gonna look like in the community? Not necessarily your issue, but I was just curious what that's gonna be.
Well, actually, I think it'll look nice. I mean, I think it'd be a nice little parking park at the end of the road, so.
I think that's the intent. It's part of the HOA open space.
How, how, how big is that, twenty by ten?
No, you know, I think it's larger than that.
Forty-four by sixty by Sixty by
Sixty on the top by a hundred down here.
Oh, you're right, sixty by a hundred. Yeah, that's bigger than anything.
Thank you very much, appreciate that.
Are there additional questions for the applicant? So, would you like to add anything?
He has another item that, so he's just gonna sit and wait for a second.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much, sir. Counsel, are there additional questions? This is a public hearing agenda, so if anyone from the public would like to come forward and talk about this item, please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing on this agenda item. Counsel, are there additional discussions? If not, can I have a motion with respect to item number three?
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve agenda item three as presented.
Motion made by Mayor Fortham Finch to approve agenda item three as presented. Is there a second?
I second.
Second by Councilmember Freeman. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven zero. Going on to the development services portion of the agenda, item number four, discuss, consider, and act upon Stony Creek Phase five A, general note requirement specified for lot one, block A, ator about four twenty-three, Trip Road. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, council. As a follow-up to the previous item, Mr. Paul Taylor has purchased the last few lots of Stony Creek Phase five A, all that face Trip Road. Those lots have remained vacant for quite some time, and he's planning to develop them. Upon review, during the building permit process, we noted, staff, my staff noted, a general note that was on the original plant, plat, which called for town council review prior to building on this specific lot. We couldn't find the reasoning in any of the language, in the history, or research, or anything like that, so that's the reason why it's on the agenda. The only idea is, there is another, this is block A, there is a lot one, block B, which is when you enter Robin Ridge on Stony Creek Phase five A. And if you consider that, if there was a typo, block B, it would make more sense, because that's a detention area that has a area that looks like you could build a home, but you shouldn't build a home there. So, I don't know the history, but either way, we needed to present it before council.
Counsel, Mr. Vader, Mr. Egan, do you, do you recall by any chance what, what may be?
I don't, I was not on council at that time. I did talk to Mayor Fogg today.
Okay.
And he doesn't recall specifically, but it could have been a drainage consideration. Because, as you know, the school drains to that particular corner and goes east from that drainage ditch, for lack of a better word, and a concern there as to what the school or the town might have needed with regards to drainage considerations. I assume, and I'm gonna ask Mr. Taylor this at some point, these lots are gonna face Trip Road, so are we going to, what are we gonna do with our drainage culvert there? It's gonna stay? I assume, Rashad, that, that drainage culvert will stay?
Are you talking to the specific lot, or you're just along the entire?
I'm really talking along that
Along the trip.
Long trip there, these, this four or five homes.
The barn dish area will have to be improved, and the driveway approaches, the culverts up under those driveway approaches will have to be
Go across the drainage?
Yes.
So it'll stay there?
Yes.
Okay.
Any, any requirements as far as our current requirements for drainage, and any issues with those, for our engineering design standards, our, our staff will make certain that that's put in place.
So, maybe the only consideration back in then was the thoughts about future drainage off of the school property.
I got you.
Mr. Egan, do you remember anything different?
I don't remember anything. Very typically, from the PNZ level, we never got feedback from council whenever they asked for more things to happen. So, if it was put on their account, then this note appears to be something from council level, so.
Gotcha. Counsel, are there additional questions for staff?
Mayor, I, I do have one question, and I think it ties into what Mr. Wade was mentioning. It has to do with the drainage. It's, it's not a secret that we have drainage issues off that corner, between the school and the trip and the culvert. And I know you made references, I'll have to go back and I'll have to draw that, but I, I think it's worthy to note that we should all be concerned that whatever is drawn for drainage takes into heavy consideration the amount of water that comes off and how it impacts those roads, those lots down the road. I know you will, Rashad, I just wanna be sure that we, we're not approaching this, these lots blindly. There's a lot of water that comes through there, and it's gonna, it's gonna require effort on the staff and effort on the developer to, to be sure that we mitigate the water as it traverses from high to low through that area.
Right.
Well, our, our town staff, building permit, I mean, building official and town engineer law will definitely assure that that is done correctly.
I think Lyle just told him that.
He's on top of all that.
Poor Lyle.
Thank you, Lyle.
Okay, applicant is here, do you have any question for the applicant? Would you like to add anything, sir? Thank you very much. Okay, we'll ask for public comments, if there are any. I'll take at this time. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel, are there additional discussions on this topic?
The, the only thing that I have is, you know, as they start to move the dirt around, if there are additional costs that are created to make sure that the drainage stays the way it is, those are not gonna be costs that the city's gonna take on, I'm assuming. That's gonna land on, on the developer, correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay, if there are no other discussions, can I have a motion with respect to agenda item number four?
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item four as presented.
Motion made by Mayor Fortham Finch to approve item number four as presented.
Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Allen. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven zero. Can I give Mr. Taylor? Moving on to agenda item number five, that is to discuss and consider and act upon a request by Irma Acosta to approve a site plan for the Chorales Plaza ator about three four oven bed line road. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, council. As you know, this is a site plan request for Chorales Plaza. The site is approximately five point seven-three acres in size, located at the southwest intersection of Beltline Road and Town East Boulevard. It's currently undeveloped, heavily treed. There is an existing home on the site that will be demolished prior to construction. The proposed uses as shown on the site plan and noted by the applicant or, allowed by right, outside of those that will require a drive-through. So, they're looking at doing restaurants and retail in, in the, in the location. The restaurants will likely be located on the ends where you see the drive-through access. The lots straddles, lots two and three are the Breen, existing Breen Baptist addition. The property will be required to be replatted prior to construction to create a single lot. The applicant is also proposing to use access through Ben's Tire, primarily due to the distance requirements for driveways, and this will actually help them provide another access point for Ben's Tire as well as the retail establishments within that proposed development. The building overall square footage is thirty-eight thousand square feet, designed in an L, L shape, facing Town East Boulevard. The facade is articulated, and the front top parapet is articulated as well. Staff will note that the front parapet will be masonry and match the surrounding building. The rear portions, there will be lattice, wood lattice screening, screening the actual AC units or any mechanical units in the rear, but from the front, you'll see the masonry screening those units. All other requirements adhere to the town requirements and town UDO requirements. PNZ commissioned, reviewed this item and had no comments and approved the submitted as, the request as submitted, and, and staff recommends approval continued to addressing the minor comment with regard to a replat prior to construction and revising the site plan to remove a minor typo lot line on the plan.
Sir, Rashad, on the item number one, staff recommendation says all comments from the town engineer shall be addressed prior to final approval by town council.
Correct.
These are already addressed?
Yes, yes. I mean, the only minor one is the, the lot line, and that's more of a, they could resubmit that tomorrow, removing that lot line.
And their request is for the, for the shell at this time, right?
Correct.
And when they add the construction, they come back?
Well, this, it'll be, this is for just approval of the, the site plan exterior portions. They had to come back and do a replat in order to create a single lot, and then we'll move forward with the actual building permit process. They will likely have to do some soil testing out there. We had a brief discussion prior, during, in the midst of all this, so it may require a few trees being removed so they can get to the actual site where the, the foundation's going to be. So, it'll be a little difficult with it being so heavily wooded, so I just wanted to give council advance notice on that. But outside of that, that would be the typical process.
So, the commercial has the same requirement as a replacement, tree replacement, when they remove the wooded, clear the wooded area?
Well, this process here, the site plan process itself required a tree survey and tree mitigation plan, which is the landscape plan that you see. So, every, all the landscaping that you see mitigates those trees that will be removed. They're just gonna have to, prior to, it's really on, based on their timing, and they can probably address it better than I can. They're gonna have to go through and do soil testing likely prior to replating to know where exactly to put certain things, utilities, foundations, things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Counsel question for Mr. Jackson?
Rashad, is this gonna have a, a drive access to Town East?
Yes.
Okay. And is that gonna require a, a replat of the Breen property?
Well, the, the site itself will require replat, but there is still a sixty-foot access easement directly south of this site. The idea would be to eventually use, use that if the, the portions that are further away from Town East develop.
So, this is not gonna get on any of the Smith property?
The Smith property, the existing home that's there to the south.
The quick cash store and, and the lot next door to it, to the west? None of that's gonna cross that property, it's gonna be west of that Smith property?
Which one is Smith property, Mr. Egan?
Where Ben's, when Lee's barbecue stand used to be?
Oh, yeah, that vacant lot there.
Vacant lot there, so is this gonna be on any of that property?
Not that I'm aware of.
Know the driveway or anything?
No.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Counsel, additional question for Mr. Jackson?
Rashad, where's the county's access at?
If you look at the site plan, it's right, I may be able to show you.
Because Rashad did say Town East earlier.
So...
It's Beltline.
Okay, so there is no access to Town East?
No, no.
So, the, there's that parking lot there in the back. There's not going to be a cut through coming in from the back, so there's the parking lot coming in from Town East?
Well, I think the original understanding was they were gonna use some of the Breen property to access Town East.
That was
It may have been very preliminary.
And preliminary idea was to do that, but I don't think they
It's not shown here.
Yeah, they weren't able to work that out
Okay.
With their other property owners.
Okay. Thank you.
Till then, they won't use any of the Smith property or anything?
No.
Okay, got you.
The applicant is here? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm representing Irma Acosta, I'm in the engineering training, I've been working on this.
Do you mind using the microphone, maybe it's difficult to write?
I'm not sure what kind of questions I might be able to answer.
Do you have, do you want to add anything?
I have nothing to add unless you have any more questions.
Okay. And the question was about the access, it is accessing only bed line, not Town East, correct?
Correct.
Counsel question for the applicant?
I think this is good.
Thank you very much. Counsel, are there additional discussions on this topic? Okay, if not, can I have a motion with respect to agenda item number five?
Motion to approve agenda item number five as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Freeman to approve agenda item number five as presented.
Second?
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify? All opposed, motion passed seven zero. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Mayor, might we ask a kind of timeframe on this?
Ah, good question.
Mr. and Mrs. Chorales might give us some idea of one or two years? Maybe Mr. and Mrs. Chorales might give us some idea of one or two years or quicker?
Do you mind using the mic for me, please? Thanks.
The plan is to start us as early as we can, but it has already been a year since we have been working to get to this point with all the trees and, you know, all kinds of issues. But I think it's a good point where we are that, you know, the site plan being approved, and the next thing is to get access to soil testing. The drawings and everything is kind of, you know, being worked by Eric Davis Engineering. So that's, that's all being worked on. So as soon as we get the approvals, we can go and go to the next step.
So we're closer.
So once everything goes smooth, it's going to go, you know, fast.
Your potential clients already identified?
Uh, we have a few. We have spoke with several people, like businesses, looking for more of retail, small shops like bakeries or innies, and then other retail, you know, clients.
How many clients do you anticipate? Maybe it's too early to say.
Yeah, it's a little bit too early, but, you know, with the square feet, about 30, 38,000 square feet, maybe like 1,000, 1,500, small businesses mostly, that's what they go by. So and then restaurants, depending upon what kind they want to be, with the drive-through, we are looking for one fast food and maybe one sit-up style on both ends. So that's one thing that will determine how much space they need, and then the rest, we will go by us, you know, we get, we get the tenants.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Excited for you.
Okay, moving on to the finance portion of the agenda, that's Item Number Six, presentation of the 2019-2020 proposed budget, focused upon capital improvement projects, debt services, road impact and water and sewer impact funds. Ms. Hopkins?
Mayor and Council, I'm going to be starting on page 33 of the packet. Just to go through the budget schedule, we are now obviously at July 8th. This is our public hearing, and as you mentioned, the CIP debt service and the impact fund budgets. On page 34 is a corrected page. I apologize, I had a typo in my utility fund budget, and it created some confusion. The calculations that I presented to you were correct, but this number, I had it transposed as 371. So this is just a correction page for your reference. Excuse me. Page 35, this is your general fund, CIP five-year plan. You've seen this many times. The plan was developed on, or adopted on June 24th. We have fully funded the Collins Road Phase One project. The police force capital needs is within the CIP at a $3,500,000 level. We have the drainage and Collins Road engineering that we expect to pay for with certificates of obligation. We have the fire station, the animal control at $5,750,000. Those are going to be general obligations. And then we have major road improvements. We'll issue general, excuse me, certificates of obligation once we determine what that need is. Again, page 36, I believe you've seen this before. This is just the outline of the timing of these projects, the sources of funds and the uses of funds. And stop me if you have questions, I'm just going to keep going. You have page 37, this is where your utility fund CIP comes in. This again was adopted on June 24th, 2019. This is your Harris line sewer line replacement, phases one and two. These are going to be funded with certificates of obligation, and they are funded with water and wastewater rates. The transition to Dallas County Water Utilities remains. That debt is authorized but unissued, and it will also be paid with water and wastewater Page 38 is the Gantt chart on those projects. Page 39 goes into your debt service. Right now, these numbers are very preliminary. We made some assumptions when we were putting this preliminary budget together. The first, we used the same estimated taxable value that Hilltop Security used in their tax rate impact analysis, so that we're all using the same value. This is very close to what I'm seeing out on DCAD. We were at about a billion four. They update that just about every day, and it's down to about this three, this 1,336 number. But that number's going to continue to change until they actually certify, and that's going to be on July 25th. So as soon as that number comes in, we will make that available.
Certification means all the protests, everything is all right?
It's, it's a statutory deadline for them, and in theory, all your protests are in. I would have to defer to DCAD as far as, but those, those are the numbers that you're going to use.
Okay.
You, you might have some capped loss, some things like that, that will also go into your levy. It's all outlined in the, in the certified levy, so you ultimately get two things. You get a certified value and you get a certified levy. The value is the taxable value, the levy is the actual amount of money that you are going to get in property taxes.
Gotcha.
We put the INS rate at the .997 to include the $3,005 in tax notes to get it into this year's tax rate. We're going to put a 97% collection rate in there. Another thing that this 97% collection rate helps us with is, again, those late protests, capped loss, just a little, those things that come up and that are adjusted by Dallas County through what they call journal entries throughout the year. And we're expecting the ending fund balance for the debt service to be approximately $318,000. Page 40 outlines where all that debt is, and you can see the calculation there at the top, right under where it says revenues. And that lines up with what Hilltop has on their tax impact analysis sheet.
Remind me again, the, under the revenue, fire engine and ambulance?
That, that is more an accounting entry than anything. The fire truck and the ambulance are actually supported by the vehicle replacement plan.
Okay.
But the auditors like to see that debt going into debt service and coming out of debt service. It does not affect your INS rate. It's dollar for dollar.
Gotcha.
Page 41 is your road impact funds. The assumptions that we made on this fund, and we have in pretty much the last three or four years, is that 100 permits will be pulled. It depends on the building activity. Usually, we do a little better than that, but we're trying to stay conservative. But your monthly reports will track anything that's going outside of those 100, those 100 permits, and the rate at which those, we think those are going to come in at is the The road impact fees are currently funding a portion of the Collins Road Phase One Intersection project, and the decrease between prior year and this year is that we had some lands that were platted between 2007 and 2015 that commanded a higher impact rate, and those have pretty much been built out, so we're not seeing that rate come in. If you have any questions on that. The road impact fund also is where the Stony Creek traffic mitigation money lives, and it is also helping to finish the Collins Road Intersection, and we expect that to have an ending fund balance of about $290,000. Page 42 is the numbers, or the details. The same is true, I'm going on to page 43 now. The same is true for the water and sewer. Again, we're expecting 100 permits. You can see the rates at which we think those are going to come in, and again, same thing about the decrease. It's the timing of the plating of some of the subdivisions. We expect that to have a funding balance, excuse me, ending funding, fund balance of about $119,000. And 44 is your details.
Is there a separate permit for the sewer, water and sewer, in other words, there are two numbers there?
Yes, sir. 44 is your details. Page 45 says in-code reports. I put those at the very end so it wouldn't create confusion, so we could go right into the tax rate discussion, but they are back there. So if you have any questions on those, let me know. Page 46 is where we start the tax rate discussion. You have probably seen these slides before. I think we've used them in another presentation, but we felt that they would help us walk forward with this discussion. So we are looking at the current payoff of existing debt if we didn't borrow any more money, and what the effect of borrowing the $3,005 for the police force. We have a current principal outstanding of $8,830,000. We have a current INS rate of .073755. I'm on page 48. Page 48 is just a graph showing you that if you don't borrow any more money by 2037, you will have paid all your debt off. Page 49 is the effect of borrowing $3,005 with tax notes. Those are the assumptions there is, again, I'm using the same growth rates that Hilltop Security used so that we could all be, you know, using the same assumptions. Tax notes are a seven-year term, and it would increase the INS rate by two, 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 two and a half cents. And then it would slowly go down after that if you didn't borrow any more money. And you can see, because they're seven-year, it really starts to dip in the 2026 timeframe. The next slide, page 50. This is if you left your I, your M&amp;O rate right where it is, but we're, but we're not going to do that because that would create a 9% increase in revenues, and that's not, that's not going to happen, so that's what the butt weight means. So we can move on to page 51. So we looked at it, we tried to look at it from an 8% growth, which is what we think we're going to get this year. So the first assumption says if you take the M&amp;O rate to the projected 8% rollback rate, and I calculated that, and I hope it's right, but that number may change with valuation. The rate goes, the M&amp;O rate goes from .3391, which it is currently, to .3350, and that's due to compression, because if you had gotten the benefit of all your increase in taxable value, you would have had a 9% increase, but it was compressed down. When added to the new INS rate of .0997, the new combined rate will be .4347 from .4129 in the current year. This will cost, and I have a typo, the average homeowner will pay $76.30 additional per year, not 7330, and again, I apologize. Next year, the M&amp;O rate will compress further with the 3.5% revenue cap. Any questions on this one? I was really wanting to try to be as clear as I could here, so if there's any questions, way I can improve on this so that we can keep moving forward, let me know.
This, this is a great summary, at least for me. I collect a level of details, but not too much.
And Liz, you backed into this by using the 8% revenue...
Yes.
...allowance.
Yes, based on the valuations that, again, Hilltop had in their tax rate summary, or tax rate impact analysis.
So, so we've got the given of projected values.
Yes.
But you solved on what it would require to have the 8% revenue allowance.
Right.
Okay.
This is, this is my attempt to calculate the effective, excuse me, the roll, the M&amp;O rollback rate is what it is. And when we get that calculation from Dallas County, we'll see if, you know, how close we come to that.
If it's higher, then your numbers will come down, so the total will be next, hopefully.
We, we know that lineage is not in here, correct? There's no way that new building is on the road yet, correct?
Right. I, I would say that's a true statement. 52, I apologize, I don't know that anybody could read this page.
Please, one second. So Mr. Wade, lineage will be a benefit for us in the future, but for this year, it really doesn't make a difference, right?
No, it doesn't make a difference this year because we've got the 8% allowance.
Right.
But next year, when we have the 3.5% allowance and lineage and QT and whatever else on stream, we're going to see a big reduction, a forced reduction in tax M&amp;O.
Is that maybe year after, maybe?
It's 2021, 2020, 2020, 2021.
We, we got one year break, right?
Yeah. It'll be, when we're here next year, you're exactly right. When we're sitting here next year, we'll see it.
And we still think there's a $500,000 allowance, oh, in addition, not in addition to either or, 3.5 or 500,000 that we'll be able to take advantage of. But what you're seeing here is we're raising the tax rate without, with a higher cap and this small amount of debt which we're going to do this year. It's not very much on taxpayer, you know, we're talking $8 a month, maybe less than that, $6 a month.
So let me, maybe it's...
But it is a tax rate increase, which we really hope to avoid.
Once we set the payment terms, can we split it up?
No, you can't split this up because we're...
Split it up.
Well, speed it up. Oh, you can always prepay debt. I don't know if you prepay tax notes or not. Can you prepay tax notes?
I would imagine, imagine so. I'd have to verify that because in Texas...
I don't know if you can prepay tax notes, but...
How was the...
This is a seven-year debt because that's the way tax notes are done, and we've chosen to go with tax notes as the easiest and you can't do COs for this, correct?
Well, we could, but the reason why we didn't go that direction, and I mean, we can revisit it and split it, but certain things that are going to be bought with this money only have a life expectancy of that, so it would be strange to, you know, to, you know, finance something that's going to not have that shelf life, i.e. a vehicle or something like that.
CO, what is the duration again? What's the maximum?
Seven years on a tax note.
COs.
Or COs. It's, it's much 25. 30. So you just wouldn't want to finance a car for 30 years.
Please.
Yeah, but, I mean, we could look at splitting the amount and doing, you know, doing it separately, but then you get into transaction costs as well, so...
Let me ask you though. So, Mr. Wade brought up a good point, right?
Yes, sir.
So there's going to be some additional taxable value increase, and that has got its implications, but opportunities for us to adjust the INS rate accordingly. Is it recommended or is it feasible for us to issue a CO for seven year?
Yeah.
I mean, for the same tab. You understand, you don't want to pay, somebody has a life expectancy of seven years, you don't want to pay over 10... life expectancy of seven years, you don't want to pay over ten, thirty years, I got it. What can we, then, when we have that INS flexibility? We know it's going to happen, right? Because QT is coming, we know the lineage is coming.
I, I think we need to use these tax notes when they're available to us for this particular use.
Okay.
And save our CO commitments to the longer projects such as drainage and fire station and things like that that we're going to need to do. And I don't know that you're going to do COs for fire station. We may do bonds. But I, I think this police study needs to be with the tax notes because it's, it's now and it needs to be, doesn't need to be stretched out over thirty years because we're going to be paying for a police department for thirty years.
But can, can we, again, this is just a question, right? Can we do CO for a short period of time or do we have a limit on how many years?
Doesn't matter.
We'll probably get a better interest rate on tax notes, Liz, than we do on COs.
Probably, because the.
Because they're tied to revenues.
Right, and depending on the timing of the market, right, you know? You, you can get those COs out there in private place for, I'm not COs, the tax notes. You can, you can make those happen fairly quickly. You don't have to go through a lot of ratings calls and things like that. So, you know, right now, they're talking about lowering interest rates, so.
I, I'm not questioning, I'm just trying to look for options, right? The COs are not tied to revenues, have the COs are also tied to the revenue.
COs are tied to their general fund, total revenues, tax notes or tax revenues.
And they both come out of, affect the INS rate. So either way, it's still affecting the INS rate. The only difference really is the duration of how long we would spread out to prepay. But I, I think the one piece that's, at least has not been mentioned yet, is we are expecting in year two, a much more dramatic compression of the M and O rate. Because Mr. Wade was exactly right that when we add on more value and more value, the way that you come to your rate is the value times the rate equals the revenue. And so, and if your values go up, you, we can only raise the revenue by three point five percent. Okay, so we can only raise the revenue by three point five percent. So as those values go up, it's drive, it's going to drive our rate down. So although we'll have the increase this year, we believe that next year, if you didn't add anything else, but we are planning to add other things, but we believe that next year, you know, the, the rate's going to go down on the M and O side.
But that's an opportunity for the outside, for the INS.
Yes, which is what we're, we're backing into with this step.
I mean, it's, it's an opportunity and it's a challenge because you have the opportunity to, to have capacity in your INS rate, but you're putting value and businesses and, you know, services needed, and you're saying to provide those services, you have to do it at three and a half percent. And, you know.
But that's a different charge. That is, that is controlled by somebody else, right?
Right, and, and there's, yeah, there's.
We should have said, what is three point five? We got it. Now, the question is, can we tend to challenge it or opportunity that's really?
The challenge for us, in my opinion, is going to be whether we're going to keep the tax rate where it is today.
Right.
Or we're going to let it drift upward a little bit before we have the real challenge with the three point five and lineage it out coming on. Because our values are going to go up significantly that year, plus all the houses that are being built right now, which aren't on the tax rolls.
But if you're saying that we have to, to fund this now, we need to raise the INS rate to fund this now.
Correct.
And then there's an opportunity, once we evaluate, once we see the impact of those numbers, to reevaluate next year and go, hey, we can lower this back down, maybe even below where we are now and, and do something like that. But I think the, the bigger point is that, and I know you're not arguing this, is just to make the point that, that we're to a point now where we have to do something with this, right? We have to have, we have to invest this dollar or so. Yes, this year, we're going to have to go up on the tax rate, right?
And, and it's not just the police study.
Right.
It's, we've had a community, a community committee that's laid out for us very vividly what our commitment is in capital improvements.
Right.
And we've got to start someday.
Exactly. Nobody likes raising taxes.
It takes money.
We don't like it, but we're to the point now to where we've, we've had to make some hard decisions based on the things that we're presented with. And so, I mean, we've talked a lot of time about this and nobody likes it, but we knew it was coming. And so, we're, we're having to pay up on this thing, and so.
I think it'll be easy to explain.
No, it, it is easy to explain. None of us like it.
It's easy to understand, just easier to explain.
I hope that, I hope that, to your point, after we're able to see the full impact of some of these developments that are coming in next year, that we'll be able to lower that INS rate back down. I mean, that's the hope. We can't promise it, but that's the hope, right? Is that we're able to do that. And so, you know, it's, it's frustrating, but it's where we are.
I agree. And we'll know more once we get certified values.
That's right, yeah.
So, any questions on page fifty-one?
This is an important chart. I think if, if anyone has questions or comments, this may be an opportunity. This is an important chart. She's laying the foundation for the next several weeks' discussions.
And I'm, you know, you can always, if you're like me, you wake up at two o'clock in the morning, you have that, that question. So certainly just send them to Susan and we'll, we'll turn around, not at two o'clock.
Two thirty maybe, not two o'clock.
But, but anytime, just send them to Susan and we'll get you an answer, so. Page fifty-two, again, this is, I, I apologize for this being so difficult to read, but this is the tax impact analysis that Hilltop Security did. And I did get all my numbers from this and I would be happy to get a better PDF and provide it to you if, if that will help you walk through this process.
So the, the column C, that's the assessed value anticipated growth over the years. Is that right?
That's correct. Yeah, that, of taxable value.
The base increase, right?
And, and that's pretty much spot on right now.
Is it?
Because your, your values always start to come down as we go, again, through those processes. You know, they come out really one, one billion four hundred and, and then all of a sudden it starts. I have, my calculation shows that where you start, that first preliminary estimated value report, you're going to lose six percent at least by the time we go through everything.
Okay.
I think these numbers are good. We've used them for a long time. We understand what they are. But I'm concerned that Lupton Farms is not in these growth numbers. It's going to come in, in five years or so, and it's going to take some kind of a spike and it's going to continue for several years. I mean, you know, I'm not going to say it's a ten-year project, but I'm concerned that Lupton Farms is not in these growth projections. And I don't know that Liz can do anything about that. I think we just have to recognize that we're going to continue to build Sunny Creek, Homestead, these other areas that are building. But at some point, we're going to have a jab from Lupton Farms.
Yeah, I think that's a great point because I didn't even catch that, that you have all those homes coming in that will definitely impact this growth rate.
Some point.
Yeah, you're exactly right.
I don't have anything further unless y'all have some questions. And again, depending on, our next meeting is going to be July twenty-second. So we will not have our certified rolls at that point and we will be going into the general fund and the EDCs. So we will keep you updated as best we can as these numbers move around. I don't, personally, I don't believe they're going to be significant. I think this is a good base to start with, to start thinking about where you want that tax rate to be. Your INS will be what it has to be, up to two point five percent, one point five by charter. So your INS rate can be what you want it to be. If you want to borrow more money, but it's going to compress, your M and O is going to be compressed by stat, statute, and it will be further compressed by your desire to keep that interest or that tax rate as low as possible. And that, I think, is the challenge, is maintenance and operation, you know, just keeping the status quo on, on services.
Councilwoman Finch?
Liz, I just want to thank you for the presentation. I think it's awesome, point on, is I think somebody already made the point, so appreciate you spending time on that and making it as succinct for us novices that try and understand city, city budgets. So I appreciate that, so thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Susan, Liz, is there, there's a lot of time difference between seven twenty-two and eight twelve. So I'm wondering if, as soon as you get those certified values and have a chance to rework the numbers, can you give us some kind of a, a draft of what you think it looks like? I mean, I, I know you'll get it to us before the eight twelve meeting, but I wouldn't mind if I had a copy as soon as you've got it so I could start studying it. Yes, it'd be nice.
Is it possible we'll get those numbers before seven twenty-five? That's just the deadline.
That's, that's the statutory deadline. They give them to us. We don't control that.
But they could give them to us before that, though, no?
They can, but they won't.
Yeah, I don't think they will. I don't know what Liz's relationship is with them, but I don't think you're going to get them before seven twenty-five.
I, I, it is my experience that as soon as they have them in hand and as soon as they feel that they're validated, they will send them out to us, but no later than July twenty-fifth. That's been my experience. So if I get them sooner, I will let you know.
Liz, I know. Mr. Wade and Mr. Freeman appreciate the data on fifty-three to sixty-one. Page fifty.
What did I do?
And you guys appreciate this data here. All the fine prints. Susan, this was a discussion, right? There are no actions are at this time. Counsel, are there any, any thoughts or discussion, any, any different ideas or considerations on the direction staff is proposing?
I think the staff did an outstanding job. I think the challenge will be if the town becomes involved, and much if that's the right word, we want them to be involved, is trying to explain to them what just happened in legislation and where we have to be today and where we have to be tomorrow. That will be a challenge that will, will be hard to meet. Friends will be on our side, I'm sure, but.
I mean, as I'm looking at twenty twenty, twenty twenty seems like it's pretty well in hand. We kind of have a really good understanding. Twenty twenty-one is the year that I think is the, is the one where we're just kind of all kind of gearing up towards. I mean, we know that we've got some other stuff that's going to be coming hitting in twenty twenty-one as far as, you know, possible debt that we're going to be placing on, but also with the, the M and O cut in the I, I mean, that's, it would, whenever projections, and I don't even know when we start planning those projections, but I think that's the year that everyone's kind of concerned about at this point.
I think we've got a tremendous challenge ahead of us. I think the media and perhaps the legislature did a very poor job of giving the public what is going to happen this year. Everybody thinks that the legislature cut taxes and they didn't. They didn't do anything with regards to this coming fiscal year. It was to twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one that they made the cuts, but they're not tax cuts, they're revenue cuts, and those are not the same. So I think we're going to have a tremendous challenge, number one, and even saying that we're going to maintain the tax rate because everybody's looking for a cut. And, and we don't control values. So they, their tax bill may go up even if we left the tax rate the same. If we raise the tax rate, their bill's still going to go up based on valuation. And I think we've got to be prepared for those challenges that are going to come to us because, again, I don't think the media and the legislature did us any favors with this. And it's not going to be just Sunnyvale, it's going to be every city.
And some of the counties are going to be impacted even higher.
Well, and.
To greater extent than.
Counties, hospital districts, everybody who raises taxes are going to have the same issue.
I think that somewhere in the middle of all this, we need to be sure that our, our senior residents realize that at sixty-five, their rates are locked. Am I right?
The rates of the value.
The rates, not the valuation. The valuation changes, but the tax rate.
Schools are locked.
Schools are.
Not the town.
The towns are not.
Town gets an exemption, but the rates are, the taxes are not locked at the city. They're locked at the school.
They, they have a, a tax ceiling on their value.
Tax, that dollar value, right?
Right, they have a, they have a ceiling. If you're sixty-five and older, you hit a certain, when you turn sixty-five, your value stays there. Okay, so the taxable value doesn't go up, but if the tax rate goes up, you're going to pay more taxes.
Okay.
The property value is sealed.
Correct.
That's my thought.
And it does happen automatically, too, as a matter of fact. They don't have to file paperwork for it generally, it's just locked.
Okay.
I think you do have to file paperwork. You have to get the age sixty-five exemption because this county doesn't know what age you are.
Oddly enough, when I checked with last year for my mom, they somehow they know that.
Oh, really?
Not, there's probably some people that slip through the crack, you're right, but generally they.
Well, there is a process for filing an age sixty-five exemption.
Somehow they figure that out.
Now, you've got a long way to go, so don't worry about it.
It's my mom, remember? It's my mom.
I twice said, I was very careful with that statement. All right, good discussion, really, really good discussion. This is a typically long, tough discussion, but Liz, great job, Susan, really good job in, in working with everybody. Moving on to the town manager portion of the agenda. Disc, item number seven, discuss, consider and act upon the first reading of ordinance nineteen dash seventeen, an ordinance of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, established in the town of Sunnyvale Police Department, providing for the appointment and qualifications of police officers, establishing a reserve police force, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability and providing an effective day. It's black.
Mayor and council, in your packet is the draft of the ordinance to create the police department. As you all know, we had a committee look at our options for law enforcement services. They recommended that we stand up our own police department. You've taken several actions over the last several meetings to do so. This ordinance is a requirement of state law and TECO, the licensing agency for police departments in the state of Texas. We have sent it to them for their review. Just want to make you all aware of that. One thing to note, it does provide for the creation of a reserve police force. We realize that won't be necessary right at the beginning, but it does give the chief the option to do so in the future. The local government code is very specific about that language, so we went ahead and included it so that we wouldn't have to change later. But other than that, the police chief is set to be an employee of the town, just like all other employees, and established in the home rule charter. Staff's happy to answer any questions. So it does identify the chief as an employee of the town, like all other employees, and will be under the home rule charter requirements as well.
Thank you. That means. Council questions on? On this agenda item. If not, this is the first reading, but can I have a motion with respect to agenda item number seven?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve agenda item seven as presented.
Motion made by Mayor Portman Finch to approve agenda item seven as presented. Is that a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, seconded by Allen to approve ordinance nineteen dash seventeen as presented. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven zero. Rachel, since this is a critical item, I'm going to bring it as a discussion item again, not a consent agenda item. Let's go through the discussions. Moving on to item number eight, council to discuss, consider and act upon. Counsel to discuss, consider, and act upon, act to make a recommendation to staff on future actions related to sales tax utilization. Ms. Guthrie?
Thank you, Mayor and counsel. As you all are aware, this year, the sales tax for street maintenance expired. And so, you know, we've communicated that to counsel, and we've advised both counsel and 4A that the counsel will need to consider how to fund street maintenance moving forward. It's estimated in the state that less than 10% of cities have both a 4A and a 4B. And as you all know, you were allocating a portion of what would be 4A funds towards street maintenance, but that now has expired. So what we're coming before you today is just to talk about all the options that are available to you. And, you know, we're not asking for any kind of vote tonight, but just to give us some direction on what you'd like to see us to bring back to you for the future. So right now, our current sales tax framework is that one cent of the sales tax goes to the town general fund, one half cent to 4B for economic development, parks, quality of life, and one half cent to 4A for economic development activities. That's the way it stands right now, but there are many options available to the city to consider. So I'm just going to walk through those for you very briefly, and I'm happy to answer as many questions as I can. But here's kind of a summary of things that I think we may be wanting to consider. First, counsel could take no action, and the budget will continue as described above. Number two, counsel could pass an ordinance to hold an election to, here's option one, create a street maintenance sales tax in increments of one quarter cent, and the overall sales tax remains the same. I think that's one thing I just really want to say for the public's benefit. None of this is about raising taxes. The consumer will see no impact. This is really a matter of when it comes to the town, how is it allocated and in what funds? I just want to make that really clear because it gets a little scary when we talk about how we're using these funds. So, so that was the first option. It was do nothing or create a street maintenance sales tax. Number, the next option would be to abolish the 4A to leave only one economic development corporation, which would be the 4B. And the reason why that would be proposed rather than abolishing 4B is by state law, 4B can do almost everything, and as far as I know, everything that a 4A can do. So you kind of get the best of both worlds. So that's why you wouldn't abolish the 4B because in a town of our size, 4B can do what 4A does. So abolish 4A to leave only one economic development corporation and allocate that half cent of existing sales tax to the general fund to be used for street maintenance and funding the new police department. Again, the overall sales tax remains the same. So we'd be taking it from economic development, using it for street maintenance and the police department. Another option would be to create a crime prevention district through local election. This option requires creation of a new board and has time limitations, and expenditures are limited to those outlined in the local government code, and I've noted the location of that. So those were the, the kind of best scenarios, everything from do nothing to abolishing the 4A and things in between. The fiscal impact in this section, I thought, was really important because it's dovetailing on your discussion you had with budget, which was anything we do right now in the next month is really almost like a, almost a nine-month lag because whatever election you, you all would pass an ordinance, we'd hold an election in November. Well, we wouldn't start making the changes to how funding is allocated until likely May or June of next year because it takes that long to work its way through the comptroller. So that's why we're really looking at this right now. And a lot of it is in preparation for what you all were talking about in the next budget year when we're facing the 3.5% compression. We want to make sure that we have funding streams allocated. A couple of other things. We have $2.5 million right now in the 4A budget, in the 4A fund balance. If you were to do away with the 4A, those funds would come to the city after all of their commitments and debts are paid off. So about $1.8 million would come to general fund, and I have had individuals, some of you individually have said, if that were to happen, we'd be interested in earmarking that money for future economic development incentives so that that money would still be there, and the city is able to enter into those agreements as well, even without the 4A. So those are the options. I have attached the local sales tax option pamphlet from the Texas Comptroller so that you can read through those on your own. But I just wanted to outline those and give you an opportunity for discussion and to give staff direction on how you would like us to come back.
Counsel, discussions.
Certainly, I'm probably the last one who wants to do away with 4A, but it is a duplication of some of our economic development options or work, which 4B can do. The pressures that we're going to have, as Susan explained, with the tax rate caps, this could be general fund revenues that are not subject to the cap, which would allow us to allocate them to other things, including what she said, street maintenance and police department, but other MNO-type operations. I'm certainly in favor of the recommendation that we hold their unspent reserve as additional economic development dollars. I think this would be an easy thing to explain to our residents as we do an election. So even though I hate to do away with 4A, I think this is a really good opportunity for us to do something that we can do without any detriment to anything we're doing now.
Mr. Freeman?
I would absolutely agree with what Mr. Wade was saying. As I look at these options, the C option just doesn't make much sense. It seems like we're spinning our wheels, creating something new that, at the end of the day, is going to be more hassle. I kind of look at the fact that we're going to have to have a police department, and we're going to have to fund that police department, and that increase in what we're actually going to have to spend for that would be a great allocation for additional funds. That's, that's my initial, my initial thought is that, you know, if we do have duplication and 4B can do everything that 4A can do, that having two separate economic development committees might not be the best use of our resources.
Allen?
We might need clarity on exactly what number two was with regards to C because my understanding is that A, B, and C would all basically go together in that discussion. Am I...
Um, no. What, the reason those are grouped together is because all of those require an election. So it was, if you were to pass an ordinance to hold an election, that's the only way you could do any of those that are listed below that. So you could just do A, you could just do B, or you could just do C.
Or we can do the combination of...
You could do a combination of like A and C, or just do A in different increments. So, yeah.
That's where I wanted to be sure I was at.
Little bit of an à la carte there.
Right, okay.
Mr. Finch?
Susan, can you, I know you put the section in there, but in reference to C, can you tell me what are the limitations on C? Like, can we pay, like, what can we not pay for? I know I'm putting you on the spot, and I apologize for that, but...
It's okay. And I don't know all the limitations off the top of my head. I'm going to look over at David. David, do you... Okay. Sorry, David. I'm putting you on the spot now, but I don't know them off the top of my head.
Like, like major things, like payroll is going to be a major thing, and equipment's going to be a major...
It's limited to what you can do. I think it says what you can do. I'll be see if I can look it up real quick.
Okay. While you're doing that, I'll make a few comments. I'll start with a couple of things. I don't disagree with you at all, Jim, on the revenue side of the issue. I am concerned a couple of things about we're playing to what we don't know. And so I'm a little bit concerned about that because we don't know what the future brings. And so we're taking a body of very involved people and those dollars from potential incentives and diverting it to the general fund. And so it, I'm a little bit, I have, I struggle with that a little bit. I struggle with that diversion of dollars to the unknown. Because I think, I think to some extent, we can be, we can play to some of that fear a little bit because it is unknown. But I also realize that whatever we do, we're kind of locked into for a while. And so if it does come true that we need these funds, then now we've locked ourselves into less flexibility. And so I'm concerned about that as well because I think we're going to need, we need to be able to provide these services that are key. I mean, what do we hear about streets and public safety, right? Those are the things, infrastructure and public safety. And so I struggle with that a little bit as well. That aside, with the 1.2 million that we'd have left, I do agree we should earmark that. I also would throw out an idea. Because of the amount of resource we have and talent in town, if we wouldn't look at possibly, and I don't know the logistics, I'm spitballing here a little bit to apologize for that, about, since we're going to have a body that's going to be potentially abolished, that we appoint a economic incentive committee to help us with that 1.2 million. That way, we still have some citizens that have some say, so I don't know if that's doable or not, but we'd have a group of people that could help us still direct those dollars. And Tracy, I have no idea what your thoughts are on that, but I'm spitballing here because I want to have, I want to make sure that we keep our residents, those people involved, that we have, that we have a community say in how that's done. And so just throwing that out. I'm not sure I have a clear, I'd like to hear more about what we're limited on as far as from this fund.
The, the first step is on, if you start a crime control prevention district, you have to come up with a plan for the first two years and a budget and the goals. And then you have to also, of the plan, you have to identify what you're trying to accomplish, different things and different tasks. And you have to set up a process to evaluate that each year to make sure it's being addressed and doesn't need to be amended. That's the first step. Then the types of things you can pay for, this is in a Local Government Code 363-151. "The district may finance all the costs of a crime control and crime prevention program, including the costs for personnel, administration, expansion, enhancement, and capital expenditures." "The program may include police and law enforcement-related programs, including..." And then it has a list of about 36 things, or 24, 36. I can read all those off and give you some examples on that.
I think you answered the question because it says already personnel and capital expenditures, right? So which are our primary things that we're going to face
Yes.
with our police department, right?
There are certain steps you'd have to take, as I said earlier. You have to do that. And crime control prevention districts have an additional budgetary timeline and constraint that you have to go through each year. It's just an extra meeting. They have to approve their budget at a certain time before it goes on.
I mean, I hate that. I hate those additional controls on all that extra red tape that we'd have to go through to get in.
And just another thing I don't think either of us mentioned, both of them, both the crime control prevention district and the street maintenance. Because remember, we've been using, we had another provision that's expired where we were getting $450-plus thousand a year into street maintenance that is gone. So, you know, that's why I keep bringing up street maintenance again. But that one, it expires in four years. So if we hold an election this November, we're going to have to hold another election the following, you know, in four years, another election, another election, which, you know, may or may not be a bad thing, but it's expensive to hold elections and it's time-consuming, you know, for staff and for the, you know, the, the whole process. So I just want to make sure you know that. In the, in the crime control prevention district, I think I read that when you hold the election, you can determine how long of a period that is. So you can kind of set, oh, I want it to last for 20 years or whatever.
But you still have to have an election somewhere down the road.
Right. So, I mean, I think, I mean, I just think there is an extra layer of bureaucracy in there, and if there's value in that, that's something you guys will need to determine. But otherwise, you know, you can also say as a counsel, and I think we've had a little bit of this conversation before, here's what we're going to use these funds for if we were to take this action so that, you know, that it's not something, you know, that staff could change, but a future counsel could because you can't lock future councils into actions.
Mr. Doug, did I hear this correctly, that when you come up with this prevention district, then you have to set up an, a budget upfront?
The CCPD has a budget they pass on to y'all, but they have to approve at a certain time. But initially, you, not only the budget, you have to set the goals and then budget of the things you want to accomplish it, and then evaluate it to see if it's reaching those or you need to tweak those.
Okay. So it's not necessarily set in stone because, I mean, we have preliminary numbers of what we think this police department is going to cost to stand up.
Correct.
If we go through that angle and we, we assign a number, and that number is, you know, we're, we're off by, you know, 300, 400, half a million, would we be able to go back and adjust that number?
Yes, you can, you won't be able to go back and adjust the sales tax rate, but you will be able to adjust the budget or the money.
Just the budget and their goals and whatnot.
You won't change the total number you're receiving, but you can change the allocation.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Counsel, additional discussions.
So I'm not opposed, I understand what Brian's talking about. I'm not opposed to some way making sure we have the right regulations or processes in place to spend the $1.8 million that we might be bringing over should we bring 4A into the general fund, the current 4A into the general fund. If we're worried about how many dollars we're going to have for economic development, we could also increase the allocation to 4B via an election. And that would, in essence, can you go to three-quarters cent? Three-quarters cent, and that would bring the same quarter into the general fund that we had before the street maintenance allocation expired. So we've, we've kept our street maintenance the same. We've kept economic development the same. In fact, we just eliminated 4A, but we combined it with 4B in essence, dollar-wise. And we still protected the 1.8 that 4A still has even if we created a, another committee to administer those funds.
I didn't know that, so that's good to know. One of my concerns about that, again, I sound like I'm talking on both sides of my mouth is because on one hand, we don't know what we're going to face, and if we do that, if we have an election and put that other quarter cent over there, then now we've locked it up. In essence, too, if we do need it to, because we just don't know the cost of this police department. I mean, I think that's the big number in the sky that we don't know. And so I'm, I am, one hand concerned about that, but I'm also concerned that how would we fund it if we lock it up? And so we just don't know. What's our, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was going to ask, whatever fund that we establish for crime prevention...
whatever those dollars are, and we talked about 300 to 400,000, that's not going to come close to funding it. So, that's just a, a method of using some funds to fund the larger part. Because we already know we're gonna probably use all of that potential money if we were to go that way.
Yeah, correct. David, and I have one question. I'm sorry, with all these AV issues, it's kind of hindering our ability to communicate. But one question I had is, so, when we go out, each item has to be listed separately. So, you would have...
On the ballot?
Right. So, you would have...
First, you'd have to dissolve the 4A, I think.
Right.
Because if that doesn't happen, none of the others can happen.
Right. But then, if you do the CCPD and then you did the street maintenance separately, if one or the other failed, we would lose that quarter cent and it would go back to the state. Is that correct?
That's my understanding. You're not authorizing...
Yeah.
And, yeah. There's a whole lot of what-ifs and whole thing. You have really more than two.
Right. We, we don't want that to happen.
Right. And that, that's the only concern with doing...
Yeah, I think that...
You have to break them out in individual questions, too.
Yeah. Obviously, individual questions, but CCPD, I, I don't know what kind of message that sends to our, our voters immediately. When you, you're establishing a police department, you're coming right at the same time creating a crime prevention district. We're not certainly advertising we have any crime right now. Uh, I know we probably do. But I think of a crime prevention district as something that's being created because we've got a tremendous problem and we're trying to throw more dollars toward it. So, we're giving up some dollars here to put into a, a limited resource. And I also think that, just as you pointed out, we don't want to get ourselves into a situation where we lose the, the quarter or half-cent either, and it goes back to the state. Doing away with 4A might be the first election. If that passes, then we're, we're putting those dollars into the general fund allocated specifically, at least with this council, to whatever you want to allocate it to. I mean, it could be just general fund. That's what sales taxes are used for. We might go so far as to say, street maintenance, replacing our expired street maintenance tax, which you approved four years ago, now it'd be five, and, and the remainder part to assist with the cost of the police department, if you wanted to go that far. And that would give the population of the voters, you know, do away with 4A, we've sold that to them. And we use the, uh, the dollars in such a way, almost as it was used before, but also as a way to mitigate some tax impact as we have debt obligations.
Right. So, I think, uh, you know, we're talking about, I think we're all kind of talking about getting rid of 4A. I think that is, you know, they're redundant, um, committees and, and, uh, groups right now. But I'd like to say that, um, we should definitely reach out to all those on 4A. And if, if we do go down that route, see how else they can continue to get them involved, you know? Maybe creating a, uh, some type of committee, Economic Development Committee or something, that they can be, um, provide advice to the council or whatnot. But, you know, and thinking about how, which option we want to take, A, B, or C. You know, the, the times are so, there's so much, there's so much unknown with this law taking effect, where we are gonna be limited to three-and-a-half percent revenue growth. I think at this time, I think it would be better to have less limits on it and keep it a little more flexibility and freedom with that money for now. And then, later, maybe we can, you know, in a few years after we see the impact of, of how, um, the changes are affecting us, then we can maybe allocate it to a, a police force or, you know, specifically make it to a, to, to road growth or whatnot. So, I'd be in favor of more keeping it general for now, um, with maybe having, creating some type of committee or something. Maybe, you know, those on 4A or some other assistance that want to get involved and then help us out in this, you know? I think we have some tough times coming up. So, you know, the more people involved, um, to think about this, to think of the problems, I think, I think we're gonna be better off.
Kevin, would we not be able to, what if we just, you know, we've already got a committee, right? That's 4B. Just expand the amount of people that are in 4B to allow more, you know, citizens to come in to...
Can do that without changing the bylaws.
You have to change the bylaws. Now, would that be through an election or...
I think it's state law.
I think it's statutory, too.
Yeah, it's seven people. But I did want to mention that there's at least one that's turned out off of 4B. So, you could look, and then there's two or three others whose terms are, they're up for reappointment. So, there is kind of a window of opportunity where you could pull, if they so chose, some people from 4A and blend those committees, as long as we didn't exceed the seven. There's some opportunity. We've been looking at that, like where terms are up and that type of thing. But yeah, you, um, the legal advice we've gotten is you can't go over seven. And I did want to mention one other thing to you, just not to add any undue pressure, but, um, I had Rachel pull the, um, the recommended election calendar, just when we need to be calling for elections. And this is an item that we would need to call for an election if you chose. And the recommended period for calling the election is July 19th through August 9th. And so, to stay within the recommended period, we would need to call it by next council meeting. We might be able to eke into the one following, but I just really wanted you to understand that there is kind of a, a pretty tight timeline to make a decision upon this.
We can't call that during a special council meeting, correct?
You could have a special council meeting if you didn't call it the next, correct?
Yeah, and we have meetings, like each of the August Mondays, we have meetings. So, we've got a little bit of wiggle room, but not a lot.
Two readings, right? So, it's two meetings?
No, just one, just one.
One meeting?
Home Roll Charter just changed it.
Oh, election.
One reading on elections.
Since I'll have to hear a little bit more, not necessarily tonight, but before we make that decision about the crime prevention district. I think that's with, even with regards to whether we fund it or whether it's a, a, a tool that we use to mitigate the unknowns of what we don't know that we see from other cities. So, I'm not sure what, what other discussions we may have talked about. And with regards to this, are we talking about only funding or we talk about other responsibilities as for as what? And I think that's why I'm, I'm hung up on this. Is it something that has to be funded? Or can this be a, a committee that still is involved in the decisions that come down through our town with a new police force and, and things that could be presented that we don't see yet?
For a crime control prevention district, you must have this board that would approve expenditures. They'd have the budget. I mean, it's, the closest equivalent that I can think of is like a 4A board. But you could, notwithstanding that, if you just want to have a new committee that you all appoint, a new board or commission that is an advisory committee on, you know, matters of public safety, you absolutely could do that, not, and not go through an election for a crime control prevention district and add another layer of, you know, um, decision-making and, you know, being, having to go back and review that, the council would stay the, the ultimate authority on how those expenditures are used.
And if you did that way, you would set the parameters of that.
Yeah, and I think the more I've heard, I mean, I brought this up, so I think, let me just close the loop on this. I think the more I've heard about the constraints of something like that, um, I, I just, I don't think I can support it. Um, just because it's, again, we're not talking about funding a whole police department. We're talking about quarter cent. We're not talking... So, I, uh, basically drawing my support from that, from that element. And kind of go back, just to clarify, I'd probably go back to B on our options. Moving that back to general fund.
Mr. Scott?
I'll say, I do like the idea of, of having some type of committee that can be involved, again, both on the economic side and then maybe on the police side, too. Again, we're gonna, uh, not only are we gonna have financial issues coming up in the near future, we're gonna have a lot more issues with, you know, brand-new police force and how to properly guide that through, uh, have it successful. So, it may be, be good to have, uh, you know, some type of advice or whatnot, you know, some type of, uh...
Yeah, and that's not an unusual thing, like a chief's advisory board or chief's advisory panel. That's not an unusual thing at all. And I think it's very positive to give, especially, you know, when we're hiring a new chief, to give them, you know, a group that's advising and giving feedback, so.
So, so David, would we, would we have a, an election first to abolish 4A? And if that, if that was polished, if that was, if that was positive...
You, you could do it in the same election.
Oh, same election, yes. So, the first resolution or the first, uh...
Well, it'd be to dissolve 4A and apply that. Basically, this is...
So, it'd be one election, or would it be if the 4A was abolished by election, then would there be a second resolution or whatever that said we're gonna take the half-cent and put it in the general fi, uh, general fund?
It'd be one election. You could write it as abolish 4A and put that half-cent.
One yes or no vote?
Yeah.
Yeah. And I, I got that from the comptroller. Remember, that was that email from them where they said it could be one measure.
Losing that half-cent, they might vote to do away with 4A and then not vote to allocate the half-cent. And we'd lose that to the state.
But that gets a little more convoluted if you say, do away with the half-cent, then do a quarter cent here and a quarter cent here.
Yeah. So, we can do it in one...
Yes.
One mark of the ballot.
Yes.
Good.
And if the election failed, 4A would just continue on, the funds would continue to go to 4A and be no change in that.
Right.
So, we do have a member of 4A here. Is this open? Can we ask him?
Let's, if he's... Additional discussions? Other additional discussions? So, Bush, you have anything to add?
4A will kick in some money to fix that.
We just approved the budget for that.
No, I, um, excuse me, I was, I was just thinking that, um, I don't, I don't like bureaucracy in, in general. And to me, if there's, there is, there are two committees here that, that tend to overlap. We do have an economic development focus, though. And we tend to drive those programs, I think, and really spend time. Not, not that our compadres don't in 4B either, but that is our focus while they're in parks and, which is also needed. But, but I'd, I'd want to say two things. Number one is, I would hope the council would consider going back to try to recoup those funds that are getting capped out. I think, I, I agree with Jim. I think, I'm a pretty level-headed thinking person. You may not think so at times. But I think explained properly, if we tell the citizens what's going on with this cap, that we've got all this growth going on, we're artificially being held low, and my rate's not gonna change. Don't throw that in there. But if you just say, your rate's not gonna change, can we get that money back? I, I would love to give that a shot if, if that was possible, just to try to get those funds. In the meantime, and with the uncertainty of that, I would roll 4A in. I'd put it into the general fund. And I, I like Jim's idea also as well, is if, if you're making this change and if it locks you for a certain period of time, does it, if you roll it into the general fund? So, you could...
It's a crime and control prevention district, it's a period of time.
Well, so if it's in the general fund, it, you can go back and you could kick that quarter back later, once the dust settles, and then get 4B functioning almost like half-economic, half-parks again. And, and I think you could make it work. And there, there are funds there, whether we can use them all for economic development, what's left of the million eight or whatever it is. That's great. But I appreciate the concern of the members on the board, but I think of the taxpayer. And I, if we're gonna lose funds, I would rather not, not give it to a business. I'd rather give it to our taxpayers if they're having to come up short on, on funds to operate the town. And it's some tough decisions. And I can tell you right now, if you went back to 4B now and said, now we've got a little more emphasis on economic maybe and just as much on parks, you know, there could be a little conflict there because you're weighing out two different projects. You could be looking at a ball field versus, you know, giving money to, to a business to get started. So, it becomes a little more complex, but I think that can be dealt with. So, but I, based on everything I'm hearing and the uncertainty of things going forward, I'd roll it into the general fund.
Paul, can I clarify what that means? Because we were talking about taking the 1.8 million that belongs in, uh, unfunded 4A at the time and designating that as economic development. When you say roll it into the general fund...
Well, what I'm saying is the future revenues going into there.
Okay.
And then, the 1.8, yeah, if there are projects that we can do, that, that, we're all for it. But we're already doing some street improvements. For example, in the industrial area, we're funding that directly. So, I'm sure there's uses for it, and that would be great. But definitely going forward to get through this uncertainty with the ability to go back.
Well, thanks for input and also thanks for your service to the town. Many capacities.
Thanks, sir.
So, counsel, so what is the direction again for the staff?
I say we move forward on the second option of number two. So, option B of number two. That's what I think makes the most sense.
Should, should we give more than one option for the citizen to pick or...
If, if we have more than one option, and we may lose the money during the vote.
No, you won't.
It's confusing, I think, if we... I think we should stick to one option. I think it could be confusing because it's a complicated issue already. And I think if we unify our message behind the one option of using those dollars to really offset our costs on police department, it's gonna be the bigger message here.
Yeah, the message is gonna be, right? We got, the one that we got to be addressing.
And streets. And streets. Streets and police.
Right. Are we taking the seed money for the future and using it for daily expense, right? So, 4A is supposed to be the seed money. Are we using that?
And to your point on seed money, I think there is, I think there are other options, whether it be tax abatements and things that will help, things we're not gonna be able to take advantage of in the future anyway. We have some new options with this cap on the, on the tax abatement side that gives us really more incentive power on that other side, correct? Yeah.
So, Mr. V, I didn't get what you said. We can take, do what again?
Well, I wouldn't, you could act on it in terms of telling me that that's what you want to do, but then we would need to bring back the measure to call the election, and that we would, we'll, we could have that.
I think, right, right. I, I still believe, almost like a vehicle maintenance plan, we gotta have some sort of economic development fund we need to put money into every year. That way, we don't end up in using this tax, because when the 3.5 revenue cap comes into picture, you're gonna be under pressure to spend all the money we have for our maintenance and operations. I, I don't want to be in a situation where we have, we don't have enough money to pay for a potential business. That's really my concern with this one. I think I've expressed that.
But Mayor, in addition to 4B dollars, we can always do tax abatements, sales tax rebates. So, we're never gonna run out of opportunities to do economic development. I, I don't necessarily disagree with what you said, but I don't, I'm a little nervous about allocating dollars to, for a reserve out of our general fund because we have other options available. Again, sales tax rebates, tax abatements, 380 agreements, those kinds of things that we can do in addition to 4B. So, we have those options that we can always create without putting additional dollars into a reserve fund just in case.
Again, I'm talking about the sales tax, right? Not, not the adverum tax. I'm talking, I'm talking about the half a cent. If the preference for the council is to move forward with abolishing 4A, in my mind, at least, my, my preference is to have at least some money allocated for the economic development. That way, there is some seed money kept. Understand? money kept, understand, the intent is pure, we, we want to do what you want to do, I, I get that, but I don't want to ever think that we spent the future money, my children's college tuition fund for my vacation, right? That's maybe a bad example, but, because seed money is important, future money is important, so.
I guess my only concern is, does that make it a harder vote at that point? Does that give us more option of losing it and going somewhere else if we're trying to make an allocation? Because we can make that allocation as a council without, without directing tax revenue towards it.
I think you're correct, I don't think that's a citizen vote, I think that's a council policy approach, I don't think that.
So once, if you were to take the step that you're discussing, then you will need to create a budget for how is that, you know, money that's coming into the general fund going to be spent, and that's going to be up to you to determine, you know, this percentage for streets, this percentage for police, and this percentage to go towards that economic development fund. So, but I really do want to stress that the tax abatement that Mr. Wade mentioned is really important because what that does is it takes the money off the top of the values, which kind of starts to mitigate a little bit of the 3.5 issue, because we're not going to see that money anyway, because the more those values go up, the more our rate goes down. So that's going to become a very important tool for us.
That's a very strategic approach.
Yes, sir.
Going forward.
But, but regardless, if you are concerned, you know, we're going to have the, almost a million dollars a year going into four B, plus we'll have the 1.8 million in a fund waiting for those opportunities when we need to, you know, offer incentives. So if you wanted to allocate a little bit of the new money coming in, you could, but do remember you have the 1.8 million dollars sitting there.
I, I want to be able to have a story and on a statement to tell citizens that I'm not spending my future money on current projects. Sure, current projects are important, no doubt, right, that, we, we can't lose that, we cannot lose that vision of the future. I don't think anyone is losing it either, okay, I'm not saying that we don't know the vision either, but. So, so I think staff got the direction, right?
Yes, sir.
To move forward in ordinance?
And we'll come back at the next meeting with that for your approval.
One quick question, 2.5 to 1.8, what happens with 700,000?
It's for debts that they've already incurred.
What did you say again?
Dets and commitments that they've already incurred.
Already done, bridge.
So the, uh?
Water plant.
Like incentives that they've already committed to contractually, agreements that have already been signed, plus the debt payment that they make payment on.
So that bring, bring down our I N S rate now?
I, I think when we bring this back to you, it'll dovetail with the fact that we're bringing the four A and the four B budget back to you next, next meeting, and so you're going to see those incentives, and Tracy, correct me if I'm wrong, you're going to see those incentives that they've already, what we consider committed to either by contract or verbally, that, that are sitting out there. So the difference between the 2.5 and the 1.8 is they're helping the general fund with its debt to some degree, and then they have made commitments for certain incentives, so we're taking that off and saying, we're going to honor those. Is that, do you agree with that, Tracy? We're going to honor those, and then anything else that you want to see, we can start looking at those budgets, because they're going to be two separate budgets for a while, and then we're going to be able to bring them into one budget. But I, I guess my point to you is when you see the budgets come before you, it's going to clarify some of those incentives they've already committed to.
Okay.
Those agreements we've been approving.
I'm sorry?
Sunnyvale Park Square, Kearney, those things we've been approving, or commitments out of four A also.
Okay, not a debt payment, but the incentive commitments.
The four A contributes 19% of our debt payment on the bridge here at Highway 80 and Collins, and they've done that for several years, and if you add up all of those annual debt payments until that bond is paid off, don't quote me, but it's about $453,000.
Is it, and now we pass the budget in September, we don't know how the election will turn out. So the I N S rate will not be impacted, right? We, we cannot predict that one.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The I N S rate will not, when we pay off the, the remaining debt on the bridge, that means we have no more debt payment.
Correct.
I, I got my answer, yeah, it won't, it won't change it.
Just to clarify, don't they pay just a part of that payment, they don't pay the whole payment?
Correct, they pay 19% of that payment.
Okay.
On the bridge.
Got it, thanks. Okay. So the last item? Okay. Item number 10, um, item number nine, I should say that, am I right? Receive update from town manager regarding the recruitment process of a police chief.
Just real quick, we did execute the contract with SGR, we finished the job description and we provided them with all of the materials to update the recruitment brochure, so we're expecting that recruitment brochure this week, and it will be posted on all the websites, and already we are getting calls from candidates, so we're referring them over to SGR, so we're directly on track, doing good.
Council questions?
Can we get an update on Jobson Road?
This is, this is not the agenda.
Disregard.
Okay.
We'll add that to your weekly update.
Officially disregarded. Moving on to item number nine, receive update from town manager regarding the recruitment, I'm sorry, moving to number, I was going to give you one more time for you to get it right.
Billy's disregarding my ears, comment.
Number 10, mayor and council request for future staff updates and agenda items, Mr. Allen?
Can we get an update on Jobson Road, please?
Yes, sir.
I think one thing I didn't ask in the budget section, Liz, will be the impact of the lack of water usage on our water fund. So I think it might have been in there, but I'm concerned a little bit about the amount of rain, which is good, but it does impact our.
Revenues.
Our water, our revenues on the water fund, so I'm a little bit concerned about that.
I think unless you print out a chart, you're going to be blown away.
Yeah, my wife said, oh, our water bill's so low, and I said, oh, that's not good, I know too much.
Well, we'll bring back some analysis on that, I think you'll be pleasantly surprised, so.
I love that already, thank you.
Good. I don't know if it's pleasant, I don't know if she meant that, but yes, you'll be surprised. Council, other additional agenda?
Something we, we might, in my opinion, need to look at, I'm noticing with all the new construction, especially on smaller lots, and those with J-drives, I'm wondering if the street width is adequate. A J-drive does not have a long driveway, and they're not putting in circle drives, so is that going to cause issues with parking on these streets? And if you drive through some of the new neighborhoods, there's no room for car parking, you've got just enough room for two cars to pass, and I'm worried that we could end up in a situation where we either have to designate no parking zones or no parking on city streets, or we end up with a situation like we have in another neighborhood. And, but if you drive through some of these streets with the J-drives, they're short driveways, there's no circle drive, and parking in the streets could become an issue. So I don't know if we need to look at that.
Okay.
In some way.
Look at there, let's practice this, I guess, okay, good, good question. Serious, Andy? Anyone else?
Just want to say thank you, staff, for all your hard work and the budget and all these other, other projects, so thank you.
Uh, one other comment, Mayor, Sunny Fest, awesome success, thank you, staff, and I saw Liz directing traffic, I saw, I mean, everybody was working, and so I just want to say thank you for all the overtime and hard work you've put in, I heard a lot of good comments from residents, and so thank you so much to the staff for, for that wonderful event, I thought it was, I thought it was really good, that was a win, and all the sheriff's support we had, thank you, Sergeant Evans, for that, so it was awesome, it was a good event for everybody.
Thanks, sir, controlling the weather also, it's beautiful. Okay, now, time is 9:40, I'm going to adjourn the regular town council meeting for Town of Sunnyvale for July 8th. Hopefully our AV system will be working better next year, next month. Good night.